A deficit, so we just wanted to go ahead and just make some line on adjustments on that budget that I had previously brought last time I was here. And then with that being said, I also understand that you had all asked that we try to cut the budget 10% and just with this being at bare bones, I we don't see that there's room for a decrease in the budget. And then the only way that I would see that is if you cut service and then if you cut service, then that cuts ridership and you know, we're trying to increase ridership, not decrease ridership. So I also look at public transportation like an infrastructure. People know that's essential service and so even though public transit's there, they can they can use it throughout the day when when they want, so they know that the times that we're open, so they can ride. They might not be consistent on when they go somewhere, but it's there when they want to ride it, just kind of like roadways, I look at it, you know. Roadways may not get used all hours of the day, but if someone needs to travel a certain road at a certain time, it's there if they need it. So again, I would just like, you ought to see that DRPT and the state is doing everything that they can to help rural area, public transportation, Plaski Area Transit also appreciates all the ongoing support that we receive from DRPT, from the town of Plaski, you all, Plaski County, and the local businesses. So at this time, I would just like to say that grants are due February 1st. We've I've been working on those and with the budget that we have prepared and with what I presented last time, I would still like to ask at this time if you all would commit to level matching funds for FY '24.
And level matching funds is an amount? What's the amount?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, okay. And have you heard anything back about that planning grant for the on-demand service?
That's what else I was gonna say. So that that kitten be submitted until February 1st also.
Okay.
So I have all that ready. DRPT has went in and looked at that grant and they're to make sure that I put everything in there that that needed to be, so that grant's ready to be submitted. It's not been submitted yet. And then also I'll be submitting the technical assistant grant for the transit development study plan that has to be done every 10 years.
And just to make sure I understand, so the that's in regards to the 2024 budget. Your 2023 budget was budgeted at $666,000, so are you expecting a large deficit in 2023?
So Jennifer and I have been talking about that and so what we've talked about is that we're gonna just have to watch and keep a close eye on it and if there if we see anything like I'll use uniforms, for example, if I can see that we can fail on uniforms to try to help offset some of that cost, I'm also looking at that right now too, just to kind of see what where we can, if there's any room that we can save.
I got just if in 2022, you were $60,000 short at 714, then it would bear to reason in 2023, if it's bare bones and there's nothing you could adjust, that you would be short the same amount.
So I will say, if you notice like on '22, the salary line for 2022 and what we budgeted for for this year, there is a difference. So the last six months of the 22-year, drivers were still getting their COVID bonus, so that's been cut out for this year. And then the driver salaries with the increase will only be six months. So we're still, we're looking at that just to as as that increase starts and try to watch it month by month.
Right, but if I look at 2024, what you're expecting it to cost is 432. So if you're expecting it to cost that much in '24, wouldn't that reason that it was gonna cost that in 2023?
But so that '24 will have that the whole increase of their salaries on there, where the '23 will just be the.
They follow the they follow the federal fiscal year, so it ends at the end of September. So 20 fiscal year 2023 ends in eight months, where so they're only gonna have to pay the increased salaries for two-thirds of the year instead of the full year.
So that might have a slight difference on that one line item, but if I go down the rest of them, I guess I'm not understanding where the where you wouldn't be short if if in 2024, you need 766,000.
And Jennifer can help me, but like, so we have to, I think it's this time that we have to look at our professional services and how much audit would cost, so there could be a savings in that.
We can hope that we might have to go back to them because that budget wasn't available.
So this, the '23 budget had to be complete, it had to be completed in November of 2021.
Well, so if you can assume that there's gonna be a shortfall at some level, I guess that you would have hopes that that DRP and D P R T is gonna be able to hopefully fund. Is that a conversation that's already happened?
So so we have to submit our expenses every month to DRPT, so they're so they're always watching and they talk to us about it, but and again, it's been several years that there was a fall and so if they have funds available, then they do help offset that cost with the 50-50 match. And I have to look at Jennifer for that because I don't I don't think there's been a shortfall besides this year since I've been in this role.
Yeah, well, I guess that's part of the reason for the question is a concern is if it's uncertain and there, I guess it would be fair to say that there's it most likely is gonna be some type of shortfall and is likely that there could be a 50-50 match. Part of that 50 match comes from us, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so that's really a liability that we should assume is gonna be true at some level. We don't know exactly how much and if it's not, then it's great for everybody, you know, but from a planning standpoint, I think, you know, we should be assuming for the worst, not the best.
Right, and I think, you know, I agree and I hear what you're saying and that's why I do like how I'm coming the ever three months now so that we can talk about it more and keep a much closer eye on it. And then as we get into our year more, then we can work with Patrice and she can help us, you know, I I think sometimes more than likely, they kind of know if they're gonna have that, you know, what kind of monies that they'll have so that I could report on that each time when I'm here also.
I think we definitely need to know, you know, whatever information is out there because that's a large amount as far as to be from a standpoint of what funding is available as in the $70,000 that you're looking for a commitment on today, whether that money is available is could be very dependent on how much we should be, how much we may be liable to for the current year that we're in.
Correct, I understand that and I, like I said, I will update every, you know, every time that I get information, I'll be sure to update.
Has the DRPT amounts increased as well or D P R T? Has their funding gone up in the past since 2022 fiscal year? Do they increase every year?
So based on, based on our budget, they give us their like the 50%, you know, the only thing that we're not sure about usually is the, make sure I say this right, the state is the, that's the only thing that's ever uncertain sometimes.
Some of it's passed through federal funds?
Yes.
Okay, so they're just administering, they have a certain pot, a pool of money that they pull out and they distribute amongst the various transit and throughout the state and we get and they base the amount they give us based on our budget?
Correct.
Okay, so we would know this is, because this doesn't even start until September of this year, right? This, the '24, this, the budget, the money you're asking for?
Yes, that one.
So we we have eight months before any of that, a penny of that gets spent.
The '24 budget, yes. That that will go into effect October 1st.
Okay.
We just have to have the commitment to submit that grant. We have to show in our grant February.
They were gonna commit $70,000.
Okay, or we, I mean, we just have to show that we have the commitment for the local match monies.
Okay, so so I'm just, I have a question just regarding D P R T. What is their role? Are they, I envision them as kind of your overseer, as the transit's overseer to some degree. They're looking at the numbers of riders, is that accurate or?
Yes, so each month I have to turn in our, like I send you all, I have to go in on their website and then they do that and then they also look at our across the state of Virginia, each transit's performance and then they also use a formula that that they use also with with money.
I'm just curious, what is the, and looking at the ridership transit report that you give us, the numbers are clearly down over the last number of years. What is their feedback on on that? What are what are they saying?
So that's why they have come up with the rediscovered transit because ridership's down across Virginia, so they're trying to help people, all transportation agencies, they're trying to work with them more one-on-one to help get the ridership up. So the four months that they'll be promoting us, they will help us come up with like radio ads and tell us how we can do free advertisement to work more one-on-one with just Plaski Area Transit to help us get the information out. So the one article that was in the Patriot, and I'm not sure if you all saw it, but we have the vehicle, a driver, and a client with the words and so she, you know, we took the picture, but then she came up, she put the heading on there to Discover Transit and then they have their logo on there just to try to make it more visible and just kind of, they're also trying to help us come up with different advertisements that we can do, you know, going out in the community is one huge thing, but just trying to come up with more creative ways across the state of Virginia to help people get ridership up.
So the the, and I want to refer to it as the hybrid and I think you mentioned it with the door-to-door service or what have you, is that a guarantee? You're applying, it's a grant or it's?
So the first part of that, it will be due February the 1st and that's the technical assistant grant. The technical assistant grant will give us monies to hire consultants to do the study. And then if the consultants say that they feel that that will be a huge benefit for the town residents, then this time next year, I would be putting in the grant for that micro-transit system.
Okay, and then I had a question on the riders, the ridership transit report. And forgive me if I've asked this question before, I'm, the way it's broken out, it says number of trips, like county trips, town trips, is is that just, is that, does that represent, does that represent people or is that represent a bus?
That represents every time somebody gets on the vehicle.
Okay.
So when they're, so like for December, for example, there was 2,110 units, that's how I look at that, is what has how we report units. So that would be, that means that somebody boarded the vehicle that many times, that many people boarded, every time you get on is counted.
So it could be the same people count it multiple times?
Correct.
Okay, so I was just curious and the reason I ask what D P R T's role is because when you, when you do the math on this and I see our, you know, budgets increasing in 2024 or anticipated to increase, even at roughly 2,000 riders a month, 24,000 a year, you're looking at $28 for every person or every trip, whether it's the same person or not. That number goes up if it's the same person, but you're looking at roughly $28 a person to ride, ride that that transit every time somebody steps on it. So my curiosity is, is D P R T, are they even interested in that or?
So DRPT is, like I said, a huge support and they put in a huge amount of money to help us run our public transportation system and I know recently, I'm not so sure that from their standpoint, that they look at the cost per rider because I know just recently Rifer Transit went to fare free, so I'm, you know, I don't hear that from DRPT, you know, about talking about that. They do talk about trying to get ridership up, but but as the cost per mile, I don't hear them talk about that.
Okay, and and just, and and the reason I ask that is really just looking at the budget. I mean, salaries are approaching half a million dollars of of a, what, let's take '24, anticipated at 766,000 and you're at 450,000 in salaries. So I'm just interested in figuring out how we get to that point where we're serving the community, people of the community, all the people of the community or as many as possible. I don't think 2,000 a month represents, it represents but a fraction of that. So that's the reason I ask those questions. I think it's important that we do look at the cost per ridership, you know, the $70,000 that we contribute, it's a lot of money and it's serving the interest of very few people at this point. And that's, that's, that's something I'd love to see us be able to overcome, but I don't see any progress in that direction, so. And I'm not saying, advertising and all of that is great, but the fact of the matter is if you have a service that's just not being used, maybe that service isn't, maybe it needs to be rethought and and that's the reason I'm really interested in the micro program or whatever that's referred to, the door-to-door service, because that seems to me that that would be far more useful at $28 a pop if if an elderly person could call and you go to their door and pick them up.
But isn't that what senior, doesn't senior services and like the ADA, don't they do more of that?
The ADA, the ADA does, if a person can't get to a bus stop, they do that. Now with senior services, you know, that's a different part of the umbrella that we have. Senior services helps people get to and from just non-emergency medical appointments throughout the New River Valley.
Right.
Not so much, just the the public transportation side of that.
Gotcha, so that, so that is an area that there, there's a gap that that could be met by a closer to door-to-door kind of service.
I just, I see that, I mean, this and from a long-term perspective, just doesn't really seem viable at all. And I understand you guys aren't here to make a profit, but paying out almost half a million dollars in salaries on a $766,000 budget and chart, you know, basically, cost of the taxpayer is $28 a piece for every person that steps on that bus, something needs to be rethought, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, that is, I mean, that's why we're gonna do that technical assistant grant to look at.
That grant could take a number of years as my, as I would imagine grants going if you are, if if if, once they do go in and they hire their consultants and their consultants work on it for a year and then they come back at some point in '24, they may have a suggestion.
Right, so what they told me was that once the grants are approved, then we will, they will send us a list of consultants that they will do that study for six to eight months, compose their final report, and then again, they don't let you submit grants outside of the grant cycle, so then it would be this time next year and then I would put in that grant for the micro-transit if they thought it was the study and then probably maybe June of '25.
Near '24, '25, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, could I make a comment? Because I had a very enlightening conversation just this afternoon with a member of my staff about the ridership and that I'd be curious, and Monica may not be able to answer this tonight, if there's been a change in the kind of ridership post-COVID as opposed to pre-COVID because a lot of people, as we know, have chose or were forced to be in a situation where they didn't return to the workforce. They changed their living habits and we may, this is hypothesis, we may be targeting the wrong people for future ridership as opposed to those who rode pre-COVID. And to me, that was kind of a fascinating thought to really look at who was riding and are they still riding or do we have a different, smaller population, but a different population and that may in fact be not only driving the numbers for us, but for other transit systems, not just in Virginia, but probably throughout the country. And I agree with you that at some point, you know, is it cost-effective, but it may be that we're looking at the wrong people, we're targeting the wrong people. The service is not conducive to the kind of people who need public transportation and maybe that gets to be the demand service, but I do think it's worth thinking about a little bit as to whether or not that's the same clientele that may have been at those higher ridership levels pre-COVID.
And I think that's certainly a good, you know, it's.
I had not thought about that before.
Good possibility, you know, people not wanting to be enclosed in spaces, but.
I've also noticed that, you know, I noticed there was a mother of a child who went to daycare with my daughter, who's now in kindergarten, and I noticed when we, before that she left for kindergarten, she was using a car. And I do wonder how many, because I feel like that that should be sort of our goal in transit is is not necessarily get people off of transit, but to give them other options. It provides a way so that somebody can, you know, get to a job and save up and, I mean, I think most people around here, if they have a choice, will buy a car if they can afford it. And so I do wonder how much has that, because I I just noticed that, the form where you first came in and I was thinking to myself, I wonder, you know, because median income here, I mean, inflation's gone up, but median income here is is gone up a lot in the past few years. So just curious that, I don't know if there's any statistics or information on that.
I know a few people have purchased cars, but I do like the fact that Darlene brought that up because just at our office the other day, we were talking about not only the community outreach piece, but going to local businesses and talking with those managers to say, you know, to talk about public transportation with them. So if they have someone to come in that applies for a job, but maybe can't get there, then they can have resources on hand that could also, that they could hand out so that they could reach out to.
I think the point is that the workforce has changed.
Definitely.
And as an example, more and more businesses are going to these self-service cashiers because they can't find people, but also some of the people who were in the workforce in those positions have not returned to the workforce. So you have very different people standing at those cash registers now than you did before, so it it may be not just talking, you know, to the businesses, but talking to their employment group to find out what they need in order to participate in public transit because those people are working.
Right.
And they're getting there somehow.
Right.
But you're trying to focus on a group of people who may not be using the transit. And again, it was just a very enlightening conversation that I had with someone about that today that made me start thinking about it a little bit differently. The cost factor is still there, but just in terms of trying to identify who's riding, why they're riding, and I believe at the last time you were in front of the council, we encouraged and it sounded like you didn't think you had completed the study and would be doing more in the spring, but really trying to tackle the issue of who's riding, getting on at what stops, getting off at what stops and whether or not there are gaps times of the day that you shouldn't be running buses because nobody's using them. And then that saves, and I know it's also a challenge in hiring people, but if you're not running that bus, you're not using all that gasoline that you're worried about the increased price of. So personally, I think there's a lot of opportunity to use data to try to streamline the system that you have, even as I think the majority think we probably need more of a demand service.
Thank you.
And that, and that's good and and you're going beyond, it may not be an educational issue or a lack of education, which a flyer would address, you know, people just being, not being aware of it, but more specific is, is, you know, who are your clientele? So I, I think those are great points and certainly something that can be looked at.
Well, it wasn't mine, it was one of my staff who shared that with.
You have an awesome staff, so you get the credit.
So we need a resolution to, is it commit? What's the appropriate language to?
I don't know that you need a resolution, I think a vote by the council to recommend or to indicate that you want that amount included in the upcoming fiscal year budget.
Okay.
As I think I've explained to you all before, this is well in advance of your opportunity to know what other organizations are requesting and even your town offices. So this is just kind of the first layer of commitment to that future. So the first $70,000, if that's the the amount that the council is indicating, would be committed in that future budget. I don't see a need for a resolution, just a voice vote.
Okay, so a vote.
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does your, do you have one representative for the D P R T or when you call them, is there, do you talk to multiple people or just one representative for this area?
So I talk to my one main person and so I'll, just for an example, for my technical assistant grant, I reach out to her and then she gets the people at DRPT that are more involved in that technical assistant part and then she will do a video conference with herself, myself, Jennifer, Tina, and the other two people at DRPT just to help us to talk about it. So I don't hop around from person to person at DRPT and talk.
Now, have they done like a study that shows different competition for riderships in this area, like Lyft or Uber?
Has DRPT or?
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, because I think that would be beneficial because I used to do Lyft, I used to be a driver for Lyft. And what I noticed is if they're going to, in this area, if they're going to a doctor's appointment, insurance pays for it. So that that could be part of.
Oh yeah, that that changed in 2019, that probably did cut back a lot of ridership that was with the Medicaid expansion.
Right, so I think that would be beneficial to look at. And plus, I know the, I know the hospital, New River at Corillian, if you don't have a ride, they give you a stipend to get a ride, so I don't know if any of the businesses around here are doing that or not.
Okay, I'll look into that.
So a move that we indicate our support and our intention to include in the next fiscal year budget, the $70,000 requested by Plaski Area Transit. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reese?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Thank you, Melon.
Thank you, and can I go ahead and just ask, can I come back in three months, which I think will be April 18th? Or I could come back sooner if.
I don't have a calendar in front of me, whatever three months is on the second Tuesday of that month. Olivia can pull it up.
Oh, I might have picked the third, okay.
April 18th.
Okay, thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to audit presentation, Robinson Farmer and Cox Associates, Emily Vires.
Evening.
Thank you all for having me. My name is Emily Vires and the partner in charge on your engagement. Most of you are probably familiar with this presentation. I'm gonna do things just slightly differently than we've done in the past, I think, since you all are pretty familiar with the report itself. I'm not gonna walk you through it like I have in the past. You should have a copy of the report itself and in front of you, you should have a smaller presentation file. It's got my contact information on the front, so as you review the report, if you've got questions, you're welcome to reach out to me at that time. But we're just gonna try to hit the highlights. I know you've got a lot on the agenda, so I'll try not to dive too much into the numbers and bore everybody to death. We'll start with page two of this smaller presentation file. This just goes over the results of the audit and the three different type of auditors' reports that are included in your financial statements. The first is the independent auditor's report. This is essentially where we state whether we think your financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You all have a clean, unmodified opinion, so that means we think that the numbers as presented in your financial statements are materially correct. The second type of auditor's report is what I usually refer to as your yellow book report. Here we take a look at internal control structure and also some compliance-related items in accordance with the Code of Virginia that the APA tells us were required. that the APA tells us were required to test. We did have one internal control item related to material audit adjustments that were proposed as part of our procedures. This does not relate to the day-to-day operations of the town. I think a lot of people get nervous when they hear this finding. It is important to note, but this does relate to getting to modified and full accrual statements so that we can say that we think that they're materially correct. So it's not really the day-to-day operations. It's making sure that all those upcoming gas or all those GASP standards have been appropriately implemented in the financial statements. If you have any finding in your report, this is the one that you would want to have. The standards are just very complex. You have a consultant that comes in and tries to help you, but your consultant isn't here all year, and so sometimes they overlook things too. We pull different samples, so sometimes we see things that they don't see. The other item that we noted was related to compliance in the Code of Virginia, more specifically with the Virginia Public Procurement Act. There are some very specific nuances if you're dealing with a sole source contract or if you have contract modifications. If your contract is being modified and it exceeds $50,000 or 25% of the original award, it has to be approved by council in advance. So we just felt like there was one contract in particular where some of the Ts weren't crossed and the Is weren't dotted that related to those two specific sections of the procurement act. We've talked to management about these a couple of times, and I know that they've already taken steps to try to make sure that anyone that's involved in procurement is aware of the related requirements. I think that we've made ourselves available to try to answer any questions should they come up. So I think that management is already taking steps to address this issue so that it doesn't come up again in the future. The third type of auditor's report that's included in your report is in accordance with uniform guidance because you expended more than $750,000 in federal funds during the year, predominantly this year with ARPA. You did have to undergo a single audit and ARPA was the program that was tested. Here, it's similar to the yellow book report where we look at internal controls and compliance-related items, more specifically to the uniform guidance requirements themselves, and then also the program-specific ARPA requirements. Based on the procedures that we performed, we did not have any internal control or compliance-related items related to the federal programs that were tested. So that's another clean, unmodified opinion. On page three, we've got basically your general fund income statement summarized for the last five years. These numbers are pulled from exhibit five of your report. You can see five-year data so that you can see how revenues and expenditures have grown or decreased over the last five years. Over to the right are compounded annual growth rates to help smooth out the effects of any outlined transactions during the year. Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. You can see that general property taxes increased during the year. That relates in part, your real estate tax rate for second half went up just slightly. Your assessed values went up during the year. I think collections were up a bit too, but there wasn't really any one category that jumped out necessarily. It was really an increase in all of the different property tax categories. Personal property tax, I imagine, will be going up again in the fiscal year that you're in now. Intergovernmental revenue went up significantly compared to last year. Last year, you had CARES funds of about 450,000, I think, in your intergovernmental. This year, you have ARPA revenue of 1.3 million that's recognized in the general fund. You utilized another 1.7 in the water and sewer fund for some ongoing projects there. You can't see that in this because it's just the general fund. I think that was really all I was going to go over. Oh, you can see your capital projects went up pretty significantly. Again, that's predominantly ARPA money. You all built a lot of the playgrounds and skate parks and all those things with your ARPA funds, which I think was really, from a personal standpoint, a great utilization of those funds. Some of the other ARPA funds are expended up in the other functions where the where the expenses related, but a lot of those capital projects were ARPA funded. On page four.
Emily, would you refer to the last green highlighted issue? Because I know the council had a goal of increasing the fund balance, and I think it's important to note that we did that again this year.
If you go to the next page, you'll see it even more highlighted. I knew that that was coming.
I was going to say, don't lose that.
This isn't my first rodeo with you all. So on the next page, you can see like Darlene mentioned. Here you can actually see the increase in your unassigned fund balance, which is the one that we look at most predominantly. Those are the funds that you all have not already set aside or committed in some way or that are not outside restricted. We compare that balance to your expenditures, and then we've also compared your cash balance to your expenditures for the year. You all may remember that GFOA recommends that you have two months of reserves on hand, which works out to about 17%. So you all are in excess of those reserves. You have worked diligently to grow those fund balances and those reserve balances over the last couple of years. You can see that the fund balance and the cash balances are trending more in line with each other now as we would kind of expect them to be. They're pretty pretty consistent at the end of 22. You probably remember that I tend to be risk averse, so while GFOA might recommend 17%, I usually recommend more than that. You're a smaller locality, so you want to make sure that you've got reserves on hand should something happen that you're really not prepared for in any given year. Also, I wanted to mention, we've had lots of people ask us questions about utilizing fund balance, particularly with the ARPA funds that are getting carried over year after year. And people want to post current year expenses to their fund balance account to use those funds. I just wanted to remind everybody that that's not how you would do that. You would budget for it in your next budget. You would have a revenue use of fund balance offset with expenses to keep your fund balance or to keep your budget balanced, but you wouldn't post it to actual fund balance on the trial balance. It's really hard to kind of see those carryover funds in the budget, and people like to actually hit that fund balance line, but that's really beginning fund balance. So in very rare occasions, should you ever post to that account. If you all are trying to utilize the carryover funds and you've got questions about how to show that in your system, Jackie and Darlene know how to get ahold of me, so they're welcome to reach out if they have any questions. The next couple of pages probably look very familiar to most of you. These are just a couple of pie charts that show where revenues are generated and funds are expended. It shows 2018 to 2022. It's really just meant as a pictorial display to show that you really generate revenue from the same three large categories every year, and you expend funds in roughly the same three categories each year. So as you head into budget season, it just kind of shows you where you're generating revenue and where you're expending those monies that you've been able to bring in. On page seven is a summary of long-term obligations. Not a whole lot to really go over here. You guys had a pretty routine year. No debt issuances. You paid off amounts in accordance with your amortization schedules. Something that I think has jumped out to everybody at the presentations that I've done thus far has been the net pension liability amount. I know that everybody is getting really tired of hearing me talk about pension and OPEB, so I'll try to keep it high level. But pension and pension liabilities went down significantly this year. You'll see that last year you had a $2.2 million liability, and this year it's showing a zero balance. That's because the market had such a great year in 2021 that you earned a significant out significant amount of money, more than VRS expected you to earn on the funds that you've already put into the retirement system. And so your net pension liability actually became a net pension asset during fiscal year 22. There's really nothing for you all to do related to that. VRS will give you updated percentages that they want you to contribute to take into account all of the market fluctuations that they're expecting so that you can make sure that you're still fully funding your pension. But people have just been pretty surprised by that drop and had a lot of questions, so I thought I would try to get out in front of that a little bit. The net effect on your full accrual financial statement was not a swing of 3.5 million of just the liability balance to the asset. That's offset with deferred inflows and outflows that get amortized in to kind of smooth the effects of that. So that was really all that I wanted to mention. I know a lot of people like to see the debt per capita averages compared to state, so you can see where you all land. Over the last couple of years, 22 is not available yet. That'll be out in a couple of months. The next couple of pages are a required communication letter. You have a standard boilerplate letter. Nothing really exciting here. It's really the same letter from last year, just rolled forward with new dates, so I won't go into that. The next couple of pages are some of the modified basis adjustments that were proposed as part of the audit process for your information. On page 13, we've got the audit recommendations that were provided to management as part of the procedures we performed. I think also in your board or your council packet, you have a copy of management's response to these recommendations that shows the steps that they've already taken to try to respond or address any of the items that we noted. And then the last couple of pages, page 15, all the way to the end, are the upcoming GASP standards. This is again just an informational item of all the standards that'll be implemented over the next few years. GASP has been busy, and so there's lots of standards to be evaluated in the coming years. But that was really all that I had to go over with you all, I think. You had a pretty good year. I know we did have a couple of items as part of the audit, but I was really pleased to see your fund balances. I know you all have been working hard at that. So we appreciate working with you all, and if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try to go over them.
I have one question. I was looking through the the bigger audit report, and there was something I hadn't seen before. It said unavailable revenue property taxes, page eight, exhibit four. And I just was wondering what that was.
So that's your second half co second half tax amounts that are, the levy is in the year, but they really won't be collected until December.
Gotcha, okay.
On the modified basis, that doesn't count as revenue, but on full accrual it does.
Okay.
There's actually a note disclosure to it. I don't know if it really goes into much more detail, but it's note seven on page 28.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to thank Ms. Bircham and her staff for the great numbers. The ending fund balance as a percentage of operating expenses, expenses at from 2020 to 2022, it's a 22% increase. That's pretty stellar. So thank, thank you and your staff very much.
I jumped the gun in getting Emily to tell you all that.
I can see why. Twenty-two percent, that's two years. That's nothing to sneeze at. I see why you jumped the gun.
I just want to read on Councilman East, what a what a pleasure to sit up here and hear such good numbers from what Councilman East and Dawson, what years ago, several, he's been on the site for 15, 16 years. At one point could struggle to make payroll. So bringing in good staff, good management, hard cuts, hard work. It tickles us to kind of sit up and see this now because the general public does not really understand the whole picture. They don't see the whole picture. They kind of see one little thing here, one little thing here, but she has to sit over and battle the whole picture. The whole picture is what makes this report, every penny. So it's awful good to know that we are in the right direction. It's it's a really good report, and that's reflection on Ms. Bircham, her her great staff that she's put in with her, and we still got a lot of work to do, but a lot better off than we was. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
What what was the procurement that, I guess, went over the threshold that needed an approval?
You all will recall that about the time, I think, I came, you were doing some emergency procurements for the filter plant. We had first one and then another go down, and we were threatened with the other two very quickly because we had a contractor on site who knew the system. He'd already installed the first two. We did a change order with his contract so that he could, in fact, do the remaining two. And he gave us actually a price break on that because he was already on site. But Emily is correct. We failed to bring that change order because it exceeded 25% to you all for public action.
I remember it being discussed. I guess we just procedurally.
I actually found minutes that I shared with Emily.
Right.
Because, believe me, we didn't take this lying down. And and Jackie knows that too. We worked mightily along with Spencer to see if there wasn't, you know, a way for this not to be seen as a finding, because clearly what was done.
I remember it was openly discussed.
Yeah, and and discussed, but you never took a formal action that could be recorded that indicated that it had the council's approval. And since then, we have made copies of the procurement manual readily available to everyone and have reminded folks. And I will tell you that the reason that we have the nice fund balance increase is that your department heads have gotten very engaged and involved in monthly auditing of their expenses, and we put in control so that we really just don't let people spend because, you know, that saying, I must have money. Checks left. We don't operate that way. So the tribute really for the improvement comes to all of your key management staff who've been very much involved. And unfortunately, and this is the sad part of the story, the engineering staff that was in charge of that particular project didn't have a current copy of the procurement act. They had an older version that did not make that same requirement. So again, it wasn't intentional on anyone's part, but I couldn't convince Emily that she could leave that out. But she did listen.
That says something about you that you didn't pay.
I just wanted to give you a chance to sell your side of the story.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I promise you, everything that was done was done with good intentions and was on oversight.
I don't doubt that enough.
Find that being a problem with us again.
Thank you.
And all four filters are replaced, right?
Absolutely, all four filters and actually at a reduced cost than if we probably had had to go out and reprocure. But be that as it may, it's over and done with. We have four filters and they're operating well.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, Emily. And she said that Jackie and I have her number. We also have her email, and we're on with her frequently to make sure that we have anything unusual. We try to make sure we're doing it right the first time. I thought you were right.
I'd rather answer a question.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, now it's the public hearing section. The first one that we have here is case number 2022, twelve dash 12 S E, special exception request from Save Vidal Health, ordinance 2023-01. Can I start with the staff report, please?
Good evening, council members. The town has received a special exception request from Sevita Health for a hospital or health center for property located at 1042 East Main Street. And the special exception request, well, I already told you, is hospital or health center. But the applicant stated that they do not dispense or store medication on site and that they're an outpatient medical counseling practice and are designated as a POBAT center. The surrounding properties are Zone B two with I two backing the property to the south, and the applicant's organization has centers throughout five states, including nine centers in southwest Virginia. The Planning Commission voted to unanimously recommend approval to you all on December 12th, 2022.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
On the additional information, it says the applicant's organization centers throughout five states, what you just said, southwest Virginia, you contact or somebody contacted Towne with to inquire upon their business. They had no knowledge of that business being there. What does that mean?
They just weren't aware that they were in town, and they had disclosed to me that they had issues in the outlet that their center is, but they related it to a different business that was in the area, not Sevita Health.
So it was, it's nothing there.
It was there, but they're just not aware of it. It hasn't caused any issues or problems for them.
With County does not have the same level of zoning that we do. You can do a lot more in With County without zoning approval.
Who's the Towne with?
Well, yeah, I think the town's similar too.
So so what it, what exactly is their is their goal? Could you kind of recap that for us?
Yeah, so they disclosed during the Planning Commission meeting that they focus primarily on counseling services along with a medication medicated assistant treatment, and I believe they were here too to speak more to that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Does the council have any other questions? All right. With that, I will open the public hearing. And then is there anyone here that would like to speak? If you like.
I'm Sylvia White with Sevita Health. I'm the regional operations manager for this company. We have facilities from the Withful Office to the Tennessee State Line in southwest Virginia. We've been in the area a little over three years. Our clientele has grown from a population of 100 to we now service around 1,200 clients in the southwest Virginia area for medication-assisted treatment for opiate and alcohol addiction treatment. We are an outpatient outpatient appointment-based. Um, we are an outpatient, outpatient, um, appointment-based facility. Our patients come to us, um, from all walks of life. They could be referred from probation and parole, or they seek assistance on their own, or they come from social services or drug court. Um, they are required to see counseling when they come into our office. They will see, um, a medical provider, do an observe urine drug screen, form a medication count. And again, like I said, see counseling and then receive an appointment to come back later. We do not dispense or keep medication on property there. Written a prescription that's electronically submitted to a pharmacy close to their home, and we're asking for your acceptance of the special use exemption that we requested last month.
I'm just curious, how, how many, how many patients do you anticipate having at the, at, should this be approved at this facility?
There is a facility in the area that, according to, um, the landlord sees around twelve hundred people.
How often?
Um, it, it, it's a daily dosed facility. So we, we are not a daily treatment facility. We are, um, a weekly treatment facility. Um, our patients can prove, um, growth in our, our, um, facility. We match the arts, we manage by the arts program for the state of Virginia. So they'll see our, uh, medical provider anywhere from eight weeks to twelve weeks on a weekly basis, and then they can progress toward bi-weekly, tri-weekly, monthly.
And how many, and how many roughly a week would you see patients?
So it, it depends on, um, the need. Um, right now, we plan to have one medical provider and two counselors in that office, and should need arise, we would increase. That provider can see up to twenty-eight patients a day based on the visit volume that they would have. So if there's more than that, we would have to bring in more staff.
So each provide, so that would be about fifty, fifty-six people a day. Thank you.
Let me ask you one question to be, just to be clear. So you guys do not prescribe, I mean, you guys do not fill medication? You just prescribe it. They go to Walgreens or wherever.
Correct.
Take their medication.
Correct.
How do you, explain to me, how do you follow up on what they do with that, with that medication once they get it filled? If, if you guys are not dispensing right there, if they're going freely, just going to Walgreens and getting whatever, whatever you do. I mean, how, how do you, how do you know what's going on?
No, no different than any other medical practice that would prescribe medication versus whether it be an opiate, a controlled substance, or a non-controlled substance. We have a diversion control policy, however, when they come to see us, they're required to bring that medication, if unused or used, back to us. They turn in any used wrappers. Um, we count the wrappers. We compare lot numbers to make sure they're consistent lot numbers. Um, we dispose of that, so they do not have an empty pill bottle or wrappers that can be sold on the street, um, for that population. Um, if they fail to bring that in, there is what we call a corrective action that's taken with that client. They can be, um, reprimanded by that provider that, you know, they need to bring that information back into us. We do observe urine drug screens with our patients. Um, those drug screens confirm whether they're taking the medication as they should be. We also do what's called confirmatory testing. That will tell us if they're taking the medication we prescribe in the right way. They can't hide that they just took that medicine today and it shows up in their urine. We know exactly how much is in their system at any given time.
Where all these, where, where do you draw these people from? I, I know here, but are you, like, centrally located in a specific area? Like only Pulaski and Raff or?
No, when we started, we were open in Abingdon. That was the first practice we opened, and people came from everywhere to there through southwest Virginia. Um, we found that the barrier to keeping someone in recovery and keeping them in recovery for a longer time was meeting the need of location. Some people would have to take the day, completely day off from work, um, drive for hours to see us, and then drive for hours back home. So we opened our location based on patient census that met, that met their need, what was closer to home, and we clustered that in different areas. What we found was patients were able to get to our service, stay within service, stay in recovery, and actually advance. They were able to not have to take the entire day off of work. They could come in and see their medical provider, the counselor, go back to work. Um, they could drop their children off at daycare. They could, you know, have a, a sitter for that child, whereas before, they would have to spend the entire day with us. So they do pull from all areas, but our, when we see that patient in your area, um, it is your service area. It is Pulaski and the county where they live. They're required to, um, have their medication filled no more than twenty miles outside of their home address.
And, and I'm not, when I'm getting ready to say it's not throwing you guys under the bus or anything, which you understand. And, and my concern is such as the other ones, that people come in here, they're dropped off, they go through your program, they go get their medication, and they're here for the day, whether they're walking up and down the streets, whether they're laying around Hardee's, McDonald's, whatever, and that's, that's my concern for my citizens. And, you know, if I, my cuff runs over.
Oh, I completely.
And I'm not throwing you. I don't know anything about you guys. Y'all probably do. This is my, my opinion.
We completely.
I don't, I just don't see more of that.
We do not bring people to your area. We treat the people that are already in your area.
I understand.
Um, we feel that client choice, if given a choice, to have a better source of care is what's important to us, and that your community deserves a better choice for patients to come in at an appointment time. We do a lot of case management, um, where we get transportation for our patients to come to the practice, go to the pharmacy, and go home. Um, we don't allow loitering in any of our facilities or in our parking lot. We do work closely with the police as far as that's concerned. So we, we do, we do structure that very strongly. You're welcome.
I'm just curious, what do you, what do you consider a success? So if a patient comes into your facility and they're prescribed medications for some, I don't know, is that eight-week program, twelve-week program?
It, it depends on, one, how long the patient's been, um, addiction. I mean, we have patients who have been with us for quite some time. The chemistry of the brain has already changed. They're going to require management of some sort for the rest of their life. There are others that are new to addiction that have had issues related to, they've become incarcerated. Something else may have happened, and we can work with them and wean them off pretty rapidly. Addiction is a relapsing disease. It does affect a patient no matter what. They may be able to overcome today, and then two weeks from now, lose a spouse and fall back into, to addiction. So we work with them closely. Success to me, and I measure success in so many different ways, because to see someone get their children back, it's important to see someone go back to school. Um, we have success from people moving off of someone's sofa into their own apartment. That's success. They may still be using, um, but they're doing better in their life. They're not going back to jail. So we measure the success in very different ways.
So is that a transition from one, say, street drug or what, what have you, uh, to something more controlled?
Um, Suboxone is, uh, the, what we prescribe, and that is easier to wean a patient from than a street drug. Um, our goal is to move toward, um, a monthly injectable of SUBLOCADE, sorry. That question always gets me, of what is success? Um, a monthly injectable of SUB, of SUBLOCADE or VIVITROL. And with that injection, they do not have medication on the street that they can sell or, um, um, divert into any other substance. It's an injection that's in their person. And with that injection, you can actually progress that person toward monthly to bimonthly, just to, um, two and three months out. And around six months, they have no desire whatsoever to utilize.
My, and I will just state this, my concern is very similar to Mr. Radcliffe's in that, um, we have to determine what is in the best interest.
Absolutely.
Community in our minds. So, so that's, that's my concern. Does, does this serve our community well? I guess that's the decision that we have to make.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions?
I do have one question. What's the breakdown between, um, the clients you see who have, like, more of an alcohol substance of use problem versus the, the sort of opiate? I mean, I assume those are your major categories of clients, is opiates and alcohol. Just curious what the breakdown is.
About twenty percent of our population, um, is followed right now for alcohol treatment versus an opiate addiction.
And that, I'm sure that varies to by location, but you mean overall?
By, it does.
And besides Withville and Abingdon, what are the other locations you have in southwest Virginia?
So Withville, Abingdon, Claypool Hill, Homeacre, Lebanon, um, Big Stone Gap, and then Clintwood. We, um, are, we have signed a lease and we are getting ready to open in Buchanan County. Um, and then also in Coburn, Virginia, and Bristol, Virginia. And those will be open by, um, the first of March.
If I could, I just want to add, when she was speaking about success, since we all measure success in different ways and different measures, one of the ways, I'm, I'm a counselor with Sevita. One of the ways that I measure success is those clients, those patients, coming back.
Yeah.
They come for their first visit, which is the hardest, is they make the phone call, and we have countless patients that make that phone call, and they don't show up. They make it again, they don't show up. They make it again, they don't. Finally, one day, success for them is making that phone call and walking through that door and having that first hard visit with the medical provider, the history, all that, and getting started, meeting a doctor they've never met, meeting a counselor they've never met. Success for me is when they come back the next week, because it doesn't take Suboxone long to start working. It, it can work for some, it's working within an hour. And to, to stop and reduce cravings or stop them and stop withdrawal. So as far as what it looks like for your community is when folks have the option. Suboxone clinic, seeing a medical provider that we, and we can also, with case management, help folks find primary care providers, help them get childcare, help them sign up for disability, help them, um, do housing applications, providing food, sending, you know, getting all the resources that you have in your community, making these folks aware of what all of those resources are, because that's what we do. And it's wraparound services. It's not just seeing a doctor. The medical providers, at first, a lot of them will help folks who don't have primary care start addressing, because they, they order initial labs. Someone may have high blood pressure. It's never been treated. Our doctors are able to do that. Do we want, we try to transition them to primary care, but our medical providers are able to do that. What this looks like for your community is the drug issue, which is rampant everywhere. I worked here in Pulaski, town of Pulaski, many, many years ago, and I know what it was back in the mid nineties. I can only imagine that it is just tremendously more than what it was. These folks are getting the treatment, and like she said, they get in and they stay. They want more for themselves, and this is an improvement to your community. You've, you have new, you have people back in the workforce. You have less cases with DSS. You have children, families being united. We help with employment. We help with all of those things, and this is a benefit to your community. I'm a counselor in the Withville office. That's where I live, and we do have differences in zoning things. So it's, it's just, we meet them where they are, and we help them move up from there. And it's, it's just beneficial all around to your, to your town, to the town, to the county. And the offer of Suboxone, SUBLOCADE injection, VIVITROL, they have choices. And the longer, for example, the SUBLOCADE is an injection, again, that's not, it's given to them in the office. They're not picking anything up at a pharmacy. They don't have anything to sell anybody. And we're having more and more and more patients go in that direction. Mostly, in my experience and with the patients that I work with, that's happening mostly because of word of mouth. Because the SUBLOCADE injection is in the system, and they can break that routine of going to the pharmacy, waiting in line, being stigmatized because they, somebody will call out, so-and-so, your Suboxone's ready. And it, so we're moving, we're moving actually fairly quickly. A lot of folks are moving to that injection. And there's nothing to sell. There's nothing to give away, and it's stabilizing. But that's the main thing, is that they come in, they can get, they can begin to get stable so quickly on this medication, and that's the benefit. And then within a week, they're just, physically, they're just feeling so much better in such a short period of time that they never had, they never have imagined that it could be that way.
Let me ask you another question. And some may have asked, it's not, it's didn't hear. So what is your success rate to failure rate?
Success rate.
Your success rate to failure rate. So what, what, what is your, what, the end, at the end of the month, and you, I have, what, to, to pass everything, but I have this many to fail, because you have to have that somewhere. You have to have a failure rate and a, and a passing rate. So what is that?
And we were discussing this on the way down here, and he can give you the specific numbers.
Let's let him get.
So what we look at is the ninety-day mark. So of course, we might have some people that come one week, and the next week they're incarcerated. But if a person works the program consistently for ninety days, meaning they see their medical provider and they see their counselor weekly, ninety-one percent are tested negative for opioids.
So you have a ninety, you're saying they're at a ninety percent success, because that's a lot better number than.
Well, it's not the gold standard, because they're, they're, they're made to go to the counseling and the medical provider.
You, you actually have an end result. That's what I'm asking. You're in result, because the rest number are never in result. If you know what I'm going, I'm not throwing anybody around. It's a never, you guys actually have a, a end result to this. Not everybody will pass, but your numbers are good. Okay.
And it's because we hold them to the counseling. Like, it's not like, uh, an option. It is part of the program, and you have to work the program. And if they don't want to work the program, we have to discharge them.
Okay, well, thank you.
How many oper, so how many, and, and I guess it just kind of tag onto that question. What, so how many people show up? So if you, if you have so many people in counseling, what is the percentage that actually come back for that second visit? What is the percentage that come back for that third visit?
So I think it's about.
So on and so forth.
Like fifteen percent, is that?
That failed to come back?
Like on the initials?
Yeah, yes. So in our population, people who are in our service for the wrong reason are weeded out pretty quickly. That second visit usually, if it occurs, the third visit does not occur because of our structure of how we do our drug screening and our counts, um, the questions that we ask on our initial versus our counseling. If someone is coming to our service for alternate reasons, that, like I said, they're, they're very quickly weeded out.
And I'll go back to a question that you asked earlier. So she was talking about our diversion program, and she talked about how we create a baseline, so they do observe dosing the first three days. They take the medication. They have to take it in front of their provider. We have a toxicology lab that we send the urine. So we know that person is taking the medication the way they were supposed to that week, and we have them do an observed urine, and then we create that baseline. If we see that number go up, we know they're taking extra medication. If we see that number go down, we know they're selling or potentially diverting some of their medication, and that is the reason you get kicked out of our program. We don't play around with the diversion, taking extra or selling it. We. We practice a harm reduction model on the rest. And so if they are testing positive, we can work through that with counseling and medication. But if they're diverting it, we do not play that game.
Mr. Mayor, we had one question on the Facebook Live, asking, and I'll try to pose this a little bit differently, but how do you keep your clientele in the right environment as opposed to where they may go that doesn't necessarily have a supportive role? In other words, that they may hang out probably with others who are users. What, what if anything does your program attempt to do to keep people out of that environment?
So when a person comes to us, their first appointment is a forty-five minute medical appointment and a fifteen minute care coordination appointment. And so a lot of times, the reason they're still in that same environment is because of lack of resources. Like by necessity, the only person's couch they have to sleep on is the one they've been sleeping on. So we identify if they need food, housing, clothing, transportation. And then we have case managers that will take what's, when they come back the second appointment, they're going to have a one hour behavioral health appointment. So those insecurities, those social determinants of health will be addressed from that care coordination in the one hour behavioral health appointment. And they will be connected to, not just connected like here's a paper, piece of paper, call this number, but it's warm handoffs where the care coordinator gets the resource on the phone and then connects, puts that individual on the phone to speak with them. So we know they're communicating with the resources.
I think you, I think you answered, you answered that too. And, and I, I did like that answer where you were saying that you monitored and if it shows a spike or, or, or lower than, you know, you, I'm a retired magistrate of thirty-some years, so I, I know what you're talking about. So I think that's answered that question. I tell you, you can go back to you bad boys, but it's going to show up on your chart. And then you're out of there.
So even she was talking about the reports, there's even a step further that we get. So let's say you come try to sneak in some urine, right? And you try to put Suboxone in that urine and that be the only thing show up. Our toxicology lab is going to show that as what is called an inverted buprenorphine level, we can even tell that. So they can't get it over.
How many chances will you give that individual?
It's the same thing, that's, that's considered diversion. That person, they might, they might get moved to unstable, but that's a diversion and that's the reason to get kicked out of the program.
So that, that.
If I could answer, I'd like to direct back to the question. Part of, part of what happens with the counseling and the care coordination is the conversations about where, what's your living situation, what's your transportation? Any unmet childcare needs? Are you having any legal issue? All of these kinds of things. Once we identify those things, the counseling piece can take, we start teaching skills. We start working, we set goals. They're required to be in the charts as identified goals. We start working toward those goals. Behavioral change, cognitive behavior therapy, motivational interviewing, those kinds of things. So the counselors work very closely and, and we're just, for the sake of not sounding professional, we're just on. I don't know how else to put words upon it. We know if they're honest and they're telling us where they're at in their life, we meet them there and then we try, we do everything we can do to improve their circumstances so that their success rate, they have a much better opportunity at being successful. So that all of the other things we've talked about. And it, and the counselors and our, quite honestly, the medical providers, a lot of times I'll, I'll sit and I'll see that someone is waiting. I'm supposed to see them at ten thirty and the doctor's been looking for fifty-five minutes when it was fifteen minute medical appointment. Because the doctor's doing the same thing I'm doing.
The doctor calling?
So the doctor's stepping in and that person's opening up with the doctor. So the medical provider is helping with all of those things as well. It's just, it's just the consistency across the board, mediation between medical and with counseling. And counselors getting to know your area, knowing your resources and assigning them and helping them get to where they need to be.
I have one more question, I think, Councilman East, you may ask this question. I'm not really sure, somebody did Brooks around. So how many people on a daily basis can, will you guys see, I mean, is, on, on, on an average day? Is it flex, is it?
It depends on the location.
Right.
Some of our locations can see thirty-five patients in a day. Some of the larger ones like a Claypool Hill, they might see fifty or sixty in a day. It just depends on, it really, this is going to sound bad, but it really depends on how bad the drug problem is here in Pulaski County. As to how many people might walk through our door. Like, that's why we can't put a specific number on it. We have had patients from this area that have came to other offices, it's traveled really hard, that has said the need for a good, sound treatment program is here.
Yeah.
I, I did last, want to ask you one more question. And it may have been asked.
Not a lot.
How do you qualify for this? Do you just walk in off the street, say, hey, I want to kick this habit? Or do you guys get referrals from, from my family doctors?
Can go, can go anyway.
We work very closely because of the, our, the, our toxicology reports. So we actually met your chief of police at the board of supervisors meeting. So we really partner a lot with like DOC, probation parole, local sheriffs because we can provide that toxicology report to where, let's say a person's going to another provider and they're getting prescribed Adderall. Or they're getting prescribed Ativan, which is a Benzo, but they're taking something else on the street. When they come before us, our toxicology ports will say, yes, this person has Benzo. It's Ativan, Xanax, Valium, it breaks it all out. So that's very, very attractive to probation, parole, sheriffs because maybe they can't afford to pay for the toxicology every time they drug test a person. Maybe they're using a little quick cup. And so that person can get over, they can't get over with the, with the confirmatory testing.
And I lied again, so I want to ask one more. And I've promised to see it. I guarantee it.
And I, I want to follow up on the, at the concern to this. When you were, when you were naming the ways that we get referrals, we get them from, anywhere from official sources?
To word of mouth.
Or if somebody's walking down the street and they see the Savita sign and they go,
I know somebody, yeah.
Today's my day. Walk in the door, they're not turned away and they're sitting. We don't have a waitlist, we don't carry a waitlist. If somebody walks into, today's my day.
Yep. Well, I can appreciate that, I appreciate that.
They are seen because we've got to catch, we've got to catch them where they are. And when they make that, when they make that commitment.
And it's not a.
Or if they call and say, can I see somebody today? Our MAs and they're, they're working and they are going to find a provider for that person to see that day. Because when they make that decision, because.
They might be ready that day, but they're not ready another day.
If we tell them, we don't have anything open until Friday. By Friday, they may talk themselves out of it. They may say, well, I think I can do this on my own. But if they, if they call or come in, they're going to be seen and they're going to be treated. It's going to be worked out to where they don't, they don't get turned away.
Will you guys get referrals from a drug court?
We did.
Okay, so judged, and I'm very familiar with drug courts, you guys get referrals to that? So, okay. I want to ask you a question.
And we communicate back and forth with drug courts.
They sign a release of information, the person, we can get, we give them a referral form and ROI, release of information. The person fills it out there with the probation officer, putting all that in, signs it in front of us. We can send them back tox- toxicology reports and notes on their primary care visits.
All right, well, thank you.
Y'all said that there's no medication on site, right?
I'm going to ask them all.
No, there's no medication on site. The injectable is delivered day of their appointment from a pharmacy, given by a medical provider and then they leave from there. So it's not kept, if they go to an injectable, it's not kept on site.
And what is your process of disposing of the injection after it's given?
The box that we.
So, or do you mean the, the garbage from it, the, the box that it came in? Because there's nothing there. Once that injectable's given, it creates a pellet under the skin, everything is placed in. So it's an absorbable pellet for thirty days. So we, we do have a biohazard pickup that picks up
That's where I.
Our used film wrappers, our empty bottles, our, our glass vials that that substance is in. The needles, that's all picked up by disposal. Want to give you.
I'm not going to ask more questions because Ms. Burrows done got mad, I've got the eye over there.
Is there any other questions from council?
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay.
And is there anyone else that wanted to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I think you have to open the public hearing.
I already did. I did that one.
Did you?
Yeah, he did.
You were asleep at that, no, I'm just kidding.
If you don't mind. I think some of the folks on Facebook would like it if everybody could speak in the microphone.
They can't see me.
We appreciate all your talking, but I, I have to acknowledge that since
I would like to.
Having listened before, it's sometimes hard to hear, so go ahead, ma'am.
I would just like to say something on their behalf. Pulaski is overwhelmed with the drugs here. I've lost a lot of friends last year that died from overdoses. And then not only them, but then our homeless people, they have nowhere to go. And that's a burden on my heart that I see every day. Is I see the homeless walking up and down the street and have nowhere to go. And some of them talking out of their heads, they don't even know where they at, what they're doing. And it's sad, but I love the idea of what they're doing. And I wish that we could go forward with what they would like us to do in our community. That's all.
Thank you.
I think it would be important to add that seventy-five percent of our patients are Medicaid patients. So we serve the ones who are most in need.
Thank you. All right.
We're getting used to seeing me because of Main Spring. But that would be my only thing. If we had a program like, this, this sounds wonderful and great that someone's on top of it. We already have a clinic here that draws in a lot, not in our area. We don't have shelters here, we don't, our transient population in Pulaski County is huge. And so then, my other thing is, is I know y'all had said that there were, you only did the county, but then you referred back that you still have people coming to other locations from hours away.
In the, in the beginning of care, we did, because we only have one facility.
But not now? All of your facilities are, are specifically, so nobody travels outside of it? Okay, that was helpful too.
And we do not treat outside of the state of Virginia and we put them in their location.
Do y'all have one in Blacksburg? When you look you up, you do have Blacksburg on. So there is one in Blacksburg along with, with Phil. Okay. My other thing, oh my goodness, that was, Main Spring, I don't know that has went away totally. I think if that gets rezoned, I don't know, we'll just see. But the, the only part that kind of bothers me is the fact that how many drug and alcohol treatments facilities in this town would we have? When Main Spring was applying and that will probably eventually become some kind of medical, if they're here, and I said that the planning commission, that puts three treatment facilities, if that would have went, within two point six miles of each other, six minutes, all here. And it's, it's not that I don't want people to get the help, I mean, I do, I, I, I see it. But there's also a cost to the residents.
What's the cost to the residents? I've just heard this argument made a lot and I'm, I've just always been kind of confused because.
Well, my thing with, they're, if they're only bringing from the county, then that's wonderful and it stays right here. You have one here that does not only serve the county. And that it comes, they're transported in from Galax, they're transported in from Hillsville, they're transported in from all over. And they don't just stay at the treatment facility while they're there.
Right.
So I do think that's a cost. When you're looking at, when you don't necessarily know who's coming into your, your community. Look at Galax. Galax's facility over there, talk to their law enforcement. It has been a huge, huge problem for them of the people who walk out, who then end up having to be incarcerated through them, who aren't from the area. It, it's, there is a cost, there, there's always a tradeoff. For anything that you bring in, whether it's good or bad, you have a tradeoff for everything. And we talk about revitalization in the town. I understand you've got to address every resident, but it's hard. I think too, to draw people into the town, that's living and in business. If you ha, how many drug treatments? That's my only thing. Then it does go to.
I mean, I had a client who died of an overdose last week, so my, my argument is more.
I'm not here to try to, I don't want to be the one who then looks like they're against everybody getting treatment. But I think it does make a difference if they're not necessarily in the, like I said, I couldn't fight against your fact when it's all here. That part is great, the drug that you keep up with the toxicology, fantastic, because I don't think that's normally done.
If you don't mind me just to speak, even with the population you have here now that do not belong to you, we have case managers that would be able to work with that clientele to get them back home.
As long as they came to you.
As long as they would come to us. We can't make them come to us. But we can do our best to make sure the patient themselves has the right fit for where they need to be in their recovery.
I, like I said, I think that's fantastic, because I think that's what's happening a lot. Something's being handed out. I, I don't have a better way to put it, it just gets handed out, I don't know how well it's.
It's meeting a need.
If, if I, if I may, I'm sorry, if I may interrupt. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get your name.
My name's Sunshine Cope, C O P E.
Sunshine, I, I appreciate your comments and, and I absolutely tend to agree with you. And I'm sure anybody's listened to me talk on this issue before. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to say it now. The, the fact of the matter is, we do have to consider the residents of this town, bottom line. That the residents of this town, the taxpaying citizens of this town are the ones that make this town work. The taxpaying citizens of this town are the reason that we had a twenty-two percent increase in our, our, our unbalanced, our, our, yeah, our unbalanced fund as a percentage of, of our spending. And if I said that wrong, I apologize. But the bottom line is, those are the people that make this town work. I personally live two blocks from this building. I walk the streets every night and I have for almost ten years now. So I, you take the dog out to walk the dog. There has been a significant increase in transient population in this town, full stop. So there, we do have to consider that. In fact, that's, in my opinion, that's the main thing we need to consider, the citizens of this town, the taxpaying citizens of this town. I don't let my girlfriend walk out at night unless I'm, I'm going with her with the dogs. That's how, and, and I do that, maybe I'm being overly cautious. But I'm also doing that as, as based on the fact that there has been an increase in the transient population. And it tends to correlate with a, a, another business here in the town. So the, the point that you raise, which is, how many do we need in a two point six mile radius, is a valid question. How many do we need in this town? And I grant it, their missions are different. It doesn't change the fact.
That it's still this.
That, that.
Still a drug and alcohol.
You're attracting people that, that have issues. I'm all about helping everybody you can help. But at the same time, we have an obligation, I have an obligation to the people of this community that go out and walk their dogs at night.
Well, we have, and I think I spoke before about Main Spring even, without them even being there, between Walgreens and the hospital is where I live. We have a playground back there. The playground is not so much utilized by children. If you want to look out, it's normally adults. Come in and go and look, I'm not saying adults can't come and swing. But the activity down at the playground is, I would say questionable a lot. And that's after dark, that's not, it's during the day, it's all the time. And so that's something when that's, I mean, it's in your backyard and you see things just not looking like they're on the up and up. And that's the reason I said, it's not trying to come against somebody getting help. My mom's worked in mental health and healthcare way before I was born. And there's people who really benefit, who really want to change. And then there's those who don't. And, but that's going to be all the time, taking care of, I mean, taking advantage of a, of a situation. But that was, I, I mean, I really, I appreciate y'all. But it's, I know it's hard to sit up there and try to make decisions for everybody and it really is, it's, you've got business, you've got residents, it makes the town work. And, but to know that you can at least be heard is appreciative, so thank y'all.
Sunshine, do you live in the town?
Sunshine, do you live in the town?
I live, yes. Yeah, right between
I thought so, I just
Right between Walgreens and, and
I didn't hear you say that when you stepped in, I just wanted to make sure.
It's here.
All right.
Yes, I see it all, and our amount of people walking through there is just astronomical. I mean, I know that what you have here in town, but over there on that side, it's just amazing. Our church is in Dublin, and I think I had, it's probably the planning commission, it was broke into um, last year, and we had someone living in there for four months before, I mean, then we walked in on him, is how we found him. We, we thought we knew, and he had even admitted he had watched some of us as we came in and as the police came, and that's our police here, our county. And Dublin police were even talking about the transient population in Dublin, which is still part of our county. I mean, and, and that was part of it, he was not from here. And they gave him a ride out of the county, but that's still, that's what we're looking at, not just in town, but in the whole, the whole county, but that's a lot here, so thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Just, I, I want to just, if I could, I'm speaking in the mic now.
Thank you.
Um, just to kind of recap, a couple of things that I think that are really important. In this particular type of treatment, being a medical office, making appointments, people are not camping out. They have appointments, they come in, they're seen, they go, we help arrange transportation. And if you could imagine for just a minute, folks who get into treatment, they get in that, on that day when they decide they want their life to be different. I have seen so many of these folks become productive, taxpaying citizens of their communities. So that is something that it would, it would be unfair to not consider the benefit all the way around for the individual. And if, and if they work, and the counselor's helping them work and getting their needs met, and they're successful, they become what we want everybody in our communities to be. And that's productive, happy, contributing members to our towns. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'm going to close the public session, or public hearing, I'm sorry. Now, does counsel have any other questions before?
Nope. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, um, is it as, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one, the special exception. Looking at our zoning ordinance, I don't see that it's going to have any effect on the proposed use of the traffic in the neighborhood, the current and future need of the proposed use in the town, the character of the existing neighborhood, and the effect of the proposed use on existing property values. I don't think there'd be any effect on any of those requirements as required by our zoning. Thank you.
I'll second.
And may I have a roll call, please?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
That one fails to pass. We have another public hearing, uh, that would be resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one, reappropriating grant funds, and may I have the staff report for that, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, actually, this item and the next two um, are following the guidance, uh, that the finance director and I received from the auditors uh, during their audit process, uh, while we had set up individual grant, uh, line items several years ago, uh, to try to mitigate the problem that we had when I first arrived of grant funds being committed to non-grant activities, and we thought that that was sufficient. Uh, the auditor, Emily, that you saw earlier, suggested that we should reappropriate the balances of each fiscal year. So this particular, uh, agenda item reappropriates all the remaining funds in each of these grants. And to, I thank, uh, this community's credit, you'll see that we have a number of grants uh, that are in process here in the town. Uh, we are tracking each one of these individually and separately, so that we have assurance within ourselves and to the grantee that they're being spent appropriately. But I would commend to you, uh, approval of this resolution, which merely, uh, mirrors uh, the kind of record-keeping that we already have in finance. Uh, but, um, the auditors have suggested that there should be a reappropriation, and that's what this item is for. And a public hearing is required because it represents a greater than one percent of the total operating budget, even though these are not in your operating budget, they are in separate grant funds.
Does counsel have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we
Wait, I have to do a public, I mean
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, so I will open the public hearing now. And is there anyone that wants to speak on this public hearing? Not, I will close the public hearing, now you can go.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Next is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two, adopting the uniform guidance policy.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as, um, Emily Byers indicated to you, we met the threshold, uh, with the last fiscal year of having a audit of our federal funds as a result of having received, uh, ARPA, uh, funding. And this is the standard uniform guidance policy that is recommended uh, to every locality once they meet that threshold. It's fairly lengthy, uh, but it does go through, uh, the processes that we are to follow in order to ensure that, uh, these funds are appropriately spent. And so we have brought it to you for your approval. Uh, we've already started informally, uh, operating under, uh, this guidance, but feel like it would be appropriate for the council to officially adopt it. So it's not based upon, um, what people think they should be doing, but it's very clear as to how things are to be handled.
A whole lot of reading.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two, uniform guidance policy.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three, adopting the capital assets policy.
And as I mentioned, uh, just a few moments ago, this is another, uh, policy that, uh, the auditors have recommended that we put officially in place. Uh, kind of, uh, as a result of, uh, what we failed to do, um, on the filters. Uh, to bring it back to you, with this having been officially adopted by the council, then there's no question as to what the policy should be in terms of how we identify and handle capital assets.
Great. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash three as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four, transferring from capital reserve to new project municipal building.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, uh, this particular, uh, reappropriation to a new category does not require a public hearing. It is funds that are already available in, uh, the capital budget. Uh, but we, uh, are suggesting that funds from the capital reserve, which include the, uh, the closeout of a smaller project, uh, be dedicated to repairs to the municipal building. Uh, the doors on both sides of this building, uh, are demonstrating a lot of, uh, moisture. Uh, we're having difficulty in ensuring, uh, that they close properly and that we are secure. And so, uh, we want to get on this just right away, and we have a good bid that is actually under this amount. So I would ask you all to approve the reappropriation. Anytime we move money from one capital budget to another, we do need to bring that to you for your approval.
You said this was from a project that there were funds not needed for?
We had one project that we closed out, uh, that had a small amount. And then you have a capital reserve already approved in your operating budget. So we're taking, um, that money and applying it to this new project, uh, that we're calling municipal buildings, but specifically, it's the two exit doors, the one on the police side, uh, that needs to remain secure, uh, obviously. Uh, and then the one on the finance side, and we're having increasing difficulty in keeping that door locked and secured. In fact, um, I think, shouldn't say this, but we had actually have it handcuffed one evening when it would not properly, uh, be secured. So, uh, this is almost an emergency situation, but we're trying to do the right thing and bringing it forward to you for approval of the transfer.
Thank you.
Sometimes I tell you all too much, don't I?
It's okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a, a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four, resolution appropriating funds to the capital reserve to the municipal building.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five?
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have, uh, received, uh, a grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars uh, from the State Office of, uh, Environmental Programs. Uh, and that money is to be used to do some initial remediation of the MacArthur site, which is the future, uh, site of the brewery. Uh, while I think I've advised you all that we also have been approved, uh, for a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. I have yet to execute the paperwork on that, so we haven't brought that one forward for appropriation. But appropriating these funds will allow us to go ahead and have some asbestos removal and other small items to prepare the building for the actual renovation that should occur, hopefully, uh, late spring, early summer, because we do have the plans already available.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six, replacement of engine six dash one.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I sent you a fairly detailed, uh, correspondence, uh, last week indicating, um, the need for replacement of this, uh, engine. Um, the real, uh, dilemma is that it cannot be, uh, fixed at this point. Uh, actually, the model, um, that, um, we currently have, uh, has, uh, is no longer, uh, being constructed, and there are no replacement parts. Uh, the current estimated time for a replacement to actually be built and obtained is two to two and a half years. Uh, and so it is important that we get this order in as soon as possible, and we understand that there may be a price increase the first of February. We are working on getting a, uh, an estimate for a so-called trade-in, uh, allowance. And since we do have the lead time of two and, two and a half years, it's not necessary, according to the auditors, that we appropriate the money at this point, uh, which will give us the opportunity to explore a number of different resources, grants, low-interest loans, zero-interest loans, whatever might be out there. Uh, but right now, we are relying upon the goodwill, uh, the volunteer stations that are in the county, uh, currently, uh, have on loan to us, uh, a piece of equipment, not the same as this engine, but something that will help us in our daily response. Uh, so I would, uh, recommend to you all that you authorize, uh, me as your town manager to go ahead and order the replacement, and there'll be, unfortunately, lots of months before we'll need to actually make a decision on the financing. But I've already begun exploring a couple of options for that purpose.
Do we have a ballpark? I understand.
They're saying it's about nine hundred thousand dollars. And I will tell you that, um, two years ago, we had this engine in our budget, uh, split between two years, then we moved it out a year because of other pressing needs. So it, uh, is in your capital budget that you all approved, um, in June for fiscal twenty-four. And it's going to be passed then before we'll actually be able to have it in, uh, in station based upon the lead time. And the two to, two and a half years is actually, um, a reasonable period of time from what we understand other items, uh, are, uh, taking, so.
So do you fore, you foresee it being some, some combination of grants, financing, and
And loans, and then whatever is available on a trade-in. And as we, um, get closer to, um, ending the ARPA funding, if we manage to have extra, we could certainly apply some of that toward this as well. Uh, but we have, as I think the council knows, a lot of significant infrastructure projects that, uh, we need to make sure we can handle, um, before we take that step.
Is this, is this the price just for the truck itself? Because if you guys, I think, sitting up here, I don't want to get into the issue where we order a truck, the fire chief, and I know he will, order what he wants on the truck. Don't get it here and then say, I wished I'd have got this, got this, got this. I understand price, you might pay for it anyway, it's going to be cheaper today than it is two and a half years. So he needs to sit down, I know he will, to make sure that's what you got.
Yeah, the other thing that I have to, uh, say is that this is a challenging, uh, proposition because of the construction of our current fire station. And so, um, given the ceiling height that we have in that building, which is, I guess, a hundred years old or close to it, uh, we have to, you know, have an engine that will fit in that building. Um, I'm sure that the fire, uh, department people would love for us to wave a magic wand and have a new fire station, which would, uh, make this less challenging. Uh, but that will be a part of the issue, and we're going to have to candidly limit ourselves on what we can afford.
Well, actually, I was going to bring it up in my comments, but you go ahead and
Okay, sorry. I thought you had lots of comments earlier, so it was my turn.
I'll narrow it down.
But I understand what you're saying, you know, that they want to add on things, um, and I appreciate that, and I've been there, uh, and I know what that's like, but we will be very conscientious that this doesn't become a more expensive, uh, proposition than it is at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-three zero six, replacement of engine, uh, six dash one as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, we move to the public comment period, and I have a, four different slips here, so, um, you know, we asked that you limit your comments to three minutes. Um, first one is angel slaughter. Did she leave, leave? Okay, we'll move on. Um, Nellie? You're, if you would, when you come up, if you would, uh, say your name and your address, please.
My name is Nellie Hayes, I live at seven thirteen store I knew, I like to say good evening to you all. I know the garbage has changed.
No, really?
So, but my question is that why is it so late coming to the town of Pulaski, which I live in the town, which I pay county and town taxes, y'all done went up again on me? So, why is it so late? Should I talk to you or who?
So late meaning when it's picked up?
Coming to pick up the trash.
Or is the time of day that they're coming?
Yes, they are coming at, uh, one day came to my house at six o'clock in af, in the evening. One evening, was it five? Some evenings they don't get there until about eight. So what is the regular time that they supposed to do? Now, uh, some places I have seen, oh, I've done went around and did a little investigation. They came up on, uh, Eighth and Ninth Street at ten o'clock this morning. So, while the south side of Pulaski, we don't get hours until late. Explain, who can explain that to me?
I don't think any of us can explain it. I do think, though, that part of it is that they're learning the routes. And so I, I noticed at my own house that they, they've been coming at my own house that they, they've been coming just a little bit earlier for the past couple of weeks.
Yeah, where do you live at?
I live up on Prospect, and.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
But they didn't, so.
So, is that a special?
No, I, as far as I know, he, he came later than other people, but the point being is, is that we can reach out to the folks at GFL and see what the situation is. But my guess is, is that part of it is that this is new, everybody's new, they're trying to figure out the roads.
Yeah, I can understand that.
And so, I think that's part of it, but certainly 8:00 at night is much too late.
Now, if you want an extra trash can, how much you pay for an extra trash can?
It's $11.
$11 a month.
Okay, so what you paying now for the town? Are we paying for the, the water and the, with the trash together? Or is that a separate bill?
The same bill that you were receiving before, the same $20 that was on your bill before.
Okay.
You don't have to pay them separately, it's all.
It's all together. That's all I wanted to know.
And you, ma'am, you worried the drop site, or you worried for a drop site?
Oh, I'm not going to take nothing.
No, no, no. It's, it's.
Well, but they're also doing bulk pickup once a month.
Well, I don't have no book, I just.
Well, I just, in case you do, you can put out, "We can't make you happy."
Well, I just, I mean, you know, I just wanted to know because we didn't understand what was going on, you know, because we was trying to figure out, were you, are we going to have two separate bills? So, so this was, my time's almost up.
It is, it is, but that's okay.
But, so Sister Brenda wants to say something, but I just wanted to know, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I like to talk.
All right, next I have Brenda Adams.
I'm not going, I'm not going to talk like that. I'm Brenda Adams. I live at 1226 Lotteer Street, and the question I have to ask, it was told to me that the town wanted to buy houses up there on Lotteer Street where I live.
Wanted to buy what?
Our houses. They wanted to buy our houses.
So.
Oh, do I talk to you?
You're certainly, this is a public comment time for you to raise issues with the council, but unfortunately or fortunately, depending on who you are, I'm the one that usually, because I have to manage, the town would have an answer for you. I know of no effort by the town to purchase any property at this time. We did purchase, year and a half ago now, some properties at a delinquent tax sale auction, and those properties we are trying to develop with new housing. And then there is a project that we are putting an application in to FEMA, which is a federal agency, and we are have contacted people who live in a very floodplain zone.
Well, I do live in a flood.
Yes.
I do live in a flood.
Yes, and people who receive those letters are asked if they are interested in having their home purchased, and we have not submitted that grant yet. We have probably a handful of people who have indicated a willingness to do that, to sell, without having any particular price in mind at this point, because we have to submit the application to the federal agency, and then if we're approved, if the money's approved, then we would come back and talk with those individuals who have expressed an interest.
Because someone did call and ask, "Did we want to sell that home?" And they did say they were from the town, but I said no, because I just had a home built from the tornado.
Right.
And so, I said no.
You wouldn't have gotten a phone call, you would have gotten a letter if it's this particular program. But let me get Olivia to take your name and address.
Okay.
And I will talk with my staff person tomorrow morning and see if he knows anything about that, and if you'll actually, at the end of the meeting, if you stay around, give us your phone number. I'll be happy to have someone.
I think she already has it.
I've got it, I'll give it to Olivia.
Then another thing. I live in, on Lotteer, but our road is terrible. Our creek has trees and everything up around it, and when it floods, it is terrible. So, who would I talk to about that situation? It's you.
See, I said it depended on fortunately or unfortunately, yes, that's all right.
So, I guess I'll just have to come and talk to you.
Yes, ma'am, or I'll give you a call tomorrow, and we can talk, and then if you still want to come in, you're welcome to come in.
Well, let's fix my situation.
Fair enough.
Thank you. All right, next I have Tim Kidd.
Hello, my name's Tim Kidd. I've lived jointly in Pulaski and Bluefield, Virginia for about the last 10 years, and now I'm residing full-time in Pulaski. I'm renting down a house on 901 Fifth Street Southeast, trying to fix it up. I appreciate all the work that is going into cleaning up the looks and the function of the town, tearing down or repurposing all the old structures. One example being the Calfy Center where I volunteered as a time, for a time as a communications committee member. Another is the ballpark that's made a big difference, and of course, the downtown storefronts. I really like the skate park, the mountain bike course. You guys have been doing such good stuff, and I really appreciate the bulk item pickup from this new trash service. I think that that is something that the old one sometimes had trouble with. That said, I do have a few issues to raise, just some small things I wanted to point out. The traffic light at the corner of Randolph and West Main Street that was disabled and made into a four-way stop, I go through that daily, and from the other residents that go through it, I don't know anybody that likes it. We all think it's, it's more danger than it is improvement, because stuff comes zooming down Randolph sometimes and kind of doesn't, disregards that stop sign, and it's, you can't see, you know, so I, I just would really ask you to consider re-enabling that, and also Johnson Street just beside that is very, very badly cracked. And the one other issue I wanted to point out was where Russell Street meets Birch Street, there's a giant hole, so. But that's really all I wanted to bring to the council's attention, and just would really appreciate your consideration on those.
Yes, thank you, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
See, it's not too hard to come up, and if you've got problems, then that's what we're here for, so thank you for coming out there. All right, next we'll move on to, I have no other slips, so we'll move on now, to the consent agenda. If you, someone, after you look over them and make a motion that we accept them from December 20th of 2022 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt town council meeting minutes from Tuesday, December 20th, 2022.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move to the council minutes, so we'll start with a new order, but, you know, because Mr. East is way down there now.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, then, we'll move on.
I have nothing.
Okay, do you have, you have anything?
Well, I actually just have, just more of a procedural question. You know, in our public comment period, we, we do a good job of recognizing the three-minute timeframe in our public hearings. We have the ability to hold a similar organization to that point, and if we, and when we do, in, in most instances with the public hearings, there's usually a, you know, we have a staff report that, you know, gives a staff information from it, but there's usually a party involved in that that has more, you know, more information that they want to share beyond a three-minute time period. And so, I feel like we need to have some consistent organization to how that individual has an opportunity to speak, because I've never seen us not want to hear it, and then still, and then.
We have a process of letting those individuals know that they have a limit of 20 minutes. I think the problem that we encounter is that if in the 20-minute time period, there is conversation back and forth as the council asks questions, and they respond, that it's hard to keep track of what part of 20 minutes is the presentation. And I do think, you know, that you probably ought to not necessarily have people keep coming back and trying to make their case, whether it's, you know, positive or negative, but I know that the council also likes to err on the side of hearing.
Well, and it may be, it may be as much of a comment for council itself as it is Darlene, if we, if we allow those moments to happen procedurally within a public hearing, you know, and then after a public hearing is closed, if we want to have somebody come back up to, to talk to, then we can handle those moments after a public hearing is closed, and that way it's not.
Give them their time.
It's, it's not open forum at that point in time, it's, it's a council-directed questions once the public hearing is closed. And that way it keeps us, I think procedurally, we get a little bit out of, out of order, you know, of, of control. Not that it's ever been an issue so much, I don't think, but I think to maintain a consistent practice, so one person doesn't think they were able to get more time than somebody else or anything of that nature, I think it would help. And then we still, once the public hearing is closed, you, the council has the opportunity to ask whatever questions they want to, to get further information.
Perhaps we could suggest that the 20 minutes be broken up into a, like a, they can use the 20 minutes however they want to. Maybe they can give a presentation and then reserve some time to answer citizen comments?
I mean, after a public hearing's closed, if we wanted to allow them to speak for 30 minutes, we could, if.
Okay.
Of our choosing, you know, at that point in time, as opposed to a public comment period of, the, the public comment period needs to be fair.
Sure, fair enough.
We have told applicants and presenters 20 minutes, but we haven't really held them to that. We could certainly, if it would help, run a clock, just like we do on the three minutes, so people are conscious of how much time they have, and I know in the case of the Planning Commission, and Caroline has left, but we have started requiring a maximum of 20 minutes for those presentations as well. So, if the council is comfortable with that as a number, we can certainly.
Well, and I don't know if, in the instance of what you're talking about, if, if the presentation could be handled before the public, before the hearing is actually open, allow them to present, allow them to say what, and then open a hearing that, that would be handled all equally. It's just, I just feel like we need to maybe work on that.
And see, I think I aired, because he said I was asleep. I didn't think that the public hearing had been opened, and he said it had, so we'll do whatever the council wants to facilitate that, but we have been telling people informally.
I think some of it's just on us, we, you know, but just, that's all I have, thank you.
I'll keep it short, I promise. Real quick question for you, Memorial Drive, great job, I've heard nothing but the sidewalks, nothing, great stuff. Do you have maybe an idea when they will be backfilling or filling in around the sidewalks?
I honestly don't, but I'll get you an answer.
Because the only reason I'm saying, because maybe ride a bike, you can follow, anyway, I move on, it's a great job. Now, to bring up the question you brought up that I was supposed to bring up. We've talked about this for years and years, and you guys sitting up here, you know, our infrastructure is fire and rescue police, and then everything comes after that, after that. And we talked about this, Councilman East and Dawson and Mike can't quite appear yet, but 10 years ago, moving on the fire department, everything's now, it's got twice as high, twice as high as it was when we talked about it. We, I thought we was even putting money, if I'm not mistaken, supposed to have been, maybe putting money aside to a fire department with the, the other management, who knows? Anyway, don't even bring it. I think it's time, I think it's time that we, while we have Ms. Burcham as our manager, that we make a honest move, sometimes with the bond referendum, we got to have it. It's, it's, it's following this, we, I don't even want to discuss repairs on it no more. It's got to be done, but the second thing I want to, and I'll move on with it, is our police department. We talked about it at the same time, we toured it, we know it's way too small, they've outgrown it. Look, with infrastructure growth, parks, Main Street, that grows too, and it grows at a rapid pace. You got to have more fire, you got to have more police officers. There's no more room in these places. One of the things that I would like to do with this council is, is I like to tour some buildings for the police department, that we already have structures here. You know, the county did a great job when they bought the Verizon building. Who would ever thought it would have been, you know, they did a great job. I don't know what the bottom line of it was, but it was already a structure here, redesigned it, there you go. We have one right here beside the hospital, talking about the, used to be the doctor's office there, I brought it up four, five years ago, that we needed to really tour that thing and turn it into the town police department. I took the clinic real, and make that our police department. It's big enough, Gary Roach didn't like it, he's not here. I'm sorry, but Chief Nice is here, she probably wants somewhere else to go than the cramped-up place she's in. So, we really need to crack the whip, while we have Ms. Burcham here and the staff to move the thing in her, in her leg where she can't get up and run and walk away, so we got her, to move on these two projects. And I would like to, very least, maybe sit down, you sit down with the chief, and take a look at some properties we have. You will have to build one, I mean, I've built a fire department, you'll have to build it, but police department, we have several nice locations probably in the town that would, would be pretty good for them. And I, and my personal feelings, one beside the hospital, I don't know how it'd work out, but I think it'd be a great spot, but that's all I have.
You know, if you look at the, on the, and I have no idea how, you know, how it would actually quantify into what was possible, but the debt per capita numbers that we have compared to what they showed as averages shows that we're extremely well off in, from a standpoint of what we are liable from a debt standpoint, and I don't know, you know, how that correlates into the conversation, you know, of how far we have the ability to think about something large or on a long, longer scale. As expensive as everything is, it probably won't go as far as everybody would like it to, but.
There's one, and one thing, you know, we had citizens actually tour these places, just everyone shook her head, it's obsolete. You have police department, you know, you got male and females, got to have different shower bays, we're cramped down, I know you did the best we could do with it, but there's just no more explaining there, it's, it's a done deal. So, I mean, I'd really like for us to sit down in the next little bit and, and really have a discussion on that, and it's, it's a big ticket, but it's a ticket you're going to have to do, you'll have to do it today, you're going to have to do it next week, it ain't going to get no cheaper. That's all, I'm tired.
Biggest ticket item we've discussed, and that's all.
That's it.
I don't want to talk.
Biggest, Mr. Kidd, I believe, was asking about Randolph, and I, I have noticed that people do come down, and I was wondering if we could maybe ask the engineering department if there were some speed slowing measures we could take on Randolph, you know, a speed bumper, something just to get people to, if they are flying down the hill, just to get them, I mean, whether it's a sign that says "You're going," or a flashing light for, I mean, just something to, to hop. Yeah, just, you know, I mean, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be a brand-new police station kind of expense, but, but yeah, something I think there could be, I mean, whether it's a, you know, a lighter, it's people, so thank you for that, and I wanted to say, I know that the start of the new trash service is a little rocky, and, you know, that our new contractor may not have done the best job he, they could have of communicating. I knew that was a problem, I had, had complaints with that, but I have been, I was, A, very happy that they took that extra day and came out and collected everybody's trash from people that first week, I appreciate that, that's something to be said, and that, you know, there was a problem and they tried to fix it. Might not have worked for everybody, but they at least tried, and I, I certainly appreciate that. And I hope that, you know, if people have problems, that they reach out to people at the town and see if we can't make the problems get a little bit better. And, you know, I think that GFL, I think that they have shown that they will listen, so hopefully if you can give them a call and say, "Hey, what's up with, why is it taking till 8:00 at night? I supposedly put my trash can away at 7:00." That's, I think those are reasonable questions, and if we can't get answers to that, then I think we should know about it, and, you know, get them to, to pay attention to that. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody coming out.
Great crowd tonight.
It was a very good crowd. I mean, I like seeing people show up for this, because this stuff matters. I mean, it's, it's our town, and people ask, they'll come and they'll ask about, they'll give me questions all the time, and I'm like, come to council, that's who you need to talk to, and because if you don't tell these guys here, they don't know. I mean, if it's not something that they're going to see, if it's something happening at your house or your, your drive to work and from home, we may not go the same way that you do. I mean, you'd never know, so. But I do appreciate everyone coming out. Just have some patience with, you know, changes. People have asked for changes for years, say Pulaski never changes. We're changing, and then people don't like it because we're changing, but we'll get through this. I mean, stuff happens, sometimes slow, but when it happens, the change makes a difference. And I think that with our Main Street project, this is a game changer for our town, and we're going to see our town starting to look a lot better and come back to life. And I just appreciate everything that the people that work for the town, there's so many that they don't get thanked. And the people up here, these guys, it's a thankless job, and I want to tell them that I appreciate them too. That's about it. You can go on with yours now.
Well, I want to make just a couple of comments about the last two or three weeks. And if I could change things, I probably, and had been smart, I probably would have suggested that the trash conversions start the first of February rather than the first of January. Because first of all, what month or end of what month do we have the most trash? All of that wrapping paper and all of those boxes that we're ordering everything from Amazon and every place. And it's also the time when people are, December's the time where people have their minds fixated on other kinds of things. And we certainly found out as it relates to the commercial business here in town, which is not the town's responsibility. That's an arrangement between a private business and a private hauler, and that private hauler used to be PSA. But we have found that a lot of businesses forgot that they needed to do something, and so unfortunately, GFL has, because of their presence in town, been inundated with a lot of requests of businesses for dumpsters. And that has created a challenge for them, and yet their contract with us is for residential. So, I picked the wrong month. We had to give advance notice, as the council knows, to PSA for the contract. And that happened to be, the magic date was the first of January. But I apologize that we have, that I picked, and the contract picked a different month. And then to top that off, many people were off during those times, so we had a staffing challenge as well. I will tell you that I know from the phone calls and emails and private messages that we've gotten on the town's Facebook page, that GFL's employees have worked every day. One morning, the gentleman that we have interfaced with was at work at three thirty in the morning to try to deliver containers and pick up the ones that were not properly placed. And so, the one thing I can say is that I believe that GFL is truly committed to doing a stellar service for us. But we had, to use Mr. Reese's favorite quote, we've had some hiccups along the way. And there are people that are, who've received a trash can and now want a second one, and they can't figure out why they can't get their second one, when we are still trying to make sure that everybody has their first can. But I will tell you, in my visits around the town, this is a much cleaner-looking community than it was before, because the absence of those plastic bags and every other kind of container has disappeared. And while we may not like the location on the street or the sidewalk, it is a much better appearance. And I would tell those who have said something about the service, you did not get the bulk collection service that you're going to be getting from this company. And that was one of the council's major issues, that we could not get bulk items picked up on a regular basis, and that, again, contributed to the unsightlyness of of the town. I will certainly carry your comments about the time of the day. I think, as someone said, they're still working out the kinks, but we have told people, you know, to have your trash container out as early as six AM. And we've also had people who bring it out at eight, and we've already, they've already gone by, and then they call and complain because they haven't been serviced. So, it, it is a learning process for everyone. But I think GFL is truly committed to giving good service, better service, more frequent service than we had. And in addition to that, the bulk collection and the weekly service, we are running our own convenience center, and I think doing a good job with that as well. But again, those boxes and stuff from Christmas are still showing up. We did do a special Christmas tree run last week, that I understand from people who took advantage of it. They were very pleased to do that, to benefit from that, rather than having to take those trees to the convenience center. And I think that if we can get another week behind us, we should be in good shape. But I would encourage people, as some of you have, to call my office, to call GFL. We're keeping track of every call, and we have data that GFL is keeping. And at a point, as we've identified on our Facebook page, we're going to be matching up the numbers of containers with the addresses, and some of them have turned up missing. We had one complaint that theirs had been stolen. We have some people who are refusing to accept the totter, but according to the ordinance that you all adopted, every occupied property is to have either a container or a dumpster, so that we can keep this town clean, and they will be billed for it. So, you may, you know, hear some pushback on that, but that's the only way we can ensure compliance. I understand feedback on our convenience center is that the gentleman we hired as the part-time site attendant is doing an excellent job, and I think we're being as responsive as we can in taking the items that were a part of the PSA requirement, and we're keeping the same operating hours as they had. So, that service hopefully is more convenient to the population, given that it's kind of more centrally located than perhaps the Dora Highway one was.
I will say, just to comment on that, GFL, as far as the commercial side is concerned, I had a conversation with them regarding a commercial dumpster. They, when, when the PSA pulled their dumpsters out, and those businesses that weren't ready or hadn't signed up for a dumpster, began putting their trash out, where the old dumpster used to be. And GFL went out and took it upon themselves to pick up all that trash off the ground, which I think is.
They really did, and and some of the larger apartment complexes that hadn't bothered to order, they actually brought multiples, eight, ten, twelve of those totters in for them to use. And actually, GFL got overwhelmed with the number of requests for dumpsters, because they had not asked to be the exclusive agent for dumpsters. In fact, as part of the RFP process, we had asked that, and they said, no, they wanted to deal with residential. They'd pick up a few dumpster customers, but that wasn't their issue. Well, when a number of these businesses didn't have a replacement, they turned to GFL first. And I kept reminding people who talked to me, you don't have to use GFL, you can use any service provider. And in fact, where I live, they've chosen a different one, but they also ordered it a couple of months ago. So, it is a little bit overwhelming to them to suddenly have to service and bring in all these other dumpsters, but they're trying their best to help the town, and I appreciate that, but they are working long hours. And then coupled with my statement about long hours, I want to tell you all that, and I've said this many times, but I have to say it again, you have one of the most outstanding staffs that I have ever had the opportunity to work with. We had people who worked both the Christmas weekend holiday and the New Year's weekend holiday. And this past weekend, we had a problem at the filtration plant, and I started making calls at four thirty in the morning, and people came out, and they worked until the problem was solved, and worked into the evening. Got in a canoe to clean the screens that need to be kept clean at the filtration plant, so that we could have good water. So, it's, it's a tough job to be a town employee, a county employee, a city employee, because you think you have a holiday, and there's no such thing. We have to respond when the call comes in. And I, as I said earlier, I'm impressed that GFL seems to be taking the same approach. And I want, again, as the mayor said, thank these people when you see them on the road, because they really are dedicated and wanting to do the very best. In fact, the answer to me the other night about the issue of the filtration plant is, we're going to, comment was, we're not going to let this get us down, we're going to fix it. And they stayed at it until they had a fix. The one other thing I want to mention to you all tonight is that we are getting close, or closer, to the point at which the town council, after the Planning Commission, will be seeing the updated comprehensive plan for the town. That is a process that is supposed to occur every five years. We have meetings scheduled for the public to come in and look at the elements that are being suggested or recommended for change through the planning process that we've been at for probably about two years, maybe a little bit longer. Those meetings are scheduled at the train station, and one is on the twenty third, and twen, no, both of them are on twenty-third and twenty-fourth in the afternoon, four to six PM. But in seeing the reaction of some of our residents to the timing of that, they have now scheduled a third one on January the thirty-first, and that will be from six to eight PM, because some people were suggesting that the four to six PM was not convenient. So, with that feedback, so we do listen to our citizens, we have added that evening time. And that's not a formal presentation, it really is going to be an opportunity to kind of walk around the room and see the different plans, the maps that you all were working on and others, to see what is being envisioned. And following that, they will have a public hearing at the Planning Commission level and at your level. They do plan to come in and do an update to you all at first meeting in February, and I hope that'll be particularly beneficial, because we'll have the results of what that citizen reaction has been at those public meetings, but that will still allow you all to have a public hearing, as will the Planning Commission on that document. It's a very important document. I think the council has learned that from the brief exercise that you all went through, you know, in trying to decide where do you want things to be in your community in the future. And so, I hope that we will have some good citizen participation at those three meetings at the train station. And I would invite all of you and the listening audience and watching audience, as the mayor often mentions, to participate in that, because this is your time to tell us what you want our community to look like in the future.
Quick question. Brush pickup, do we still do brush pickups at homes? I know that we have the large item and that the brush is now, but for people that can't, I had someone ask me that, and it just hit me a minute ago.
If they will call in to Public Works,
Okay.
they will pick it up as they are able, but it wouldn't necessarily be on a fixed route or fixed schedule.
Okay.
Or if they happen to be out and see it, because they're in a particular neighborhood, they will pick it up. But the best way is for somebody to call it in, so we actually have the address in the same way, you know, that we ask for people to identify potholes. If we have a specific location, then we can go there.
And then is there recycling at our, there is, correct?
Yep. I've dumped off many a box.
Yes, because that's, I had someone ask me that, and I told them that I was pretty sure that I knew that they've talked about later on, we may have it here, but for now, we do have it at the large, I mean, at the drop site, is it? Okay. Okay, well, that's, so with that, just a reminder of the future council meeting will be February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Close session at six, open session will be at seven, and as I have nothing else on my agenda, I call this meeting adjourned.